We'll call together our city council meeting and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is that in the United States of America, and through the love of the works of sands, one nation, without borders, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item is Letter B, the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Aye.
And we'll call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The next is Letter C, our presentation, a planning commission report, but there was no planning commission, so there will be no report. The next item is number eight, which is a public open forum. Is there anyone here for a public open forum? The next item is number nine, the 2019 organizational appointments, and we have an enclosure. And I think it's on page one.
In your agenda packet, you have an enclosure, and in that enclosure, it's a proposed organizational chart, and we'll start with the first page.
And so from the very top, first thing we need to do is have a deputy mayor. Would anyone like to nominate anyone?
I'd like to nominate Janet Haglen.
And do we have a second for that?
Second.
Second.
You should also ask for further nominations if there are any others.
Before the second or after?
You should ask for the nominations first, and then you can vote on the nominations.
Is there anyone else who would like to nominate anyone else? Hearing none, then let's vote on Janet Haglen for deputy mayor. Denny?
Aye.
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 And aye. Right Elizabeth, Janet will be the deputy mayor.
Looking at the other items overall, for those in the audience who are not familiar with an organizational meeting, the first meeting for a city council is where they appoint different items, and statutorily, they have different things that they must appoint at an annual meeting. So what I've supplied for each of the members in their agenda packet is kind of a chart indicating what they need to look at for the different items. And so I'll name off a few of the first items, and you can let me know whether you want further discussion or not. So in this case, our depository meeting, that's our bank, is listed as Wells Fargo, and we've had Wells Fargo for a number of years. Our legal newspaper in the past has been the Forest Lake Times, and in your packet, you do have a letter from the Forest Lake Times indicating that they would like to continue to be your legal newspaper. Even though they have changed their format, which means they no longer supply it on a free basis or no cost basis, now it's you have to have a subscription to it. It's online, and they do supply the peach, so there is a circulation that will have our public notices, as they've indicated in their proposal, that they will include our legal notices in the peach. So that would be circulated amongst Columbus. The engineer and planner, civil attorney, criminal attorney, these are contracts that we have standing longstanding today, with the exception of the planner, and those are self-renewing unless you want to change those. The city auditor is on a yearly basis, and we've already approved that contract in 2018. The city assessor, we approved a contract. We're in the final year of that contract, so 2019 will be the last year. Animal control, which is Dover Animal Control, that was a one-year contract, and you will have to look at that to make sure that that's the contract you want for animal control. And then there's one other contract in your additions, and that was for accounting services for 2019, and that was from Rebecca Peterson. So if there's any item there you would like to change or discuss, otherwise you'll accept that section by motion to include the two contract approvals, and then we can go and talk about appointments to different committees.
All right. Would someone make a motion, accepting all of the legal paper, engineer, planners, attorneys, et cetera?
Someone.
Second.
Oh, let's call for a vote.
Aye.
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 And aye.
The next item you have on here, which is something I was requested to put on, and that is you have a city council workshop meetings. This concept is used in a lot of cities. It's a good format. It's an opportunity for the council to talk as a group. It's a public open meeting. There isn't minutes necessarily taken at these because there's no motions made at these meetings, but it's a good opportunity to talk about in more detail for concepts that are coming up or you want more information on. The proposed is that it would be on the first Wednesday between four and six, and I'm not sure how the entire council feels about that, but certainly that's open for discussion. And the last three items, the council is required to appoint a responsible authority for data practices, and you're also required to appoint a compliance official and petty cash custodian. And historically, the first two have been the city administrator, which is me, and the petty cash custodian, the deputy treasurer. What we try to do is we try to not have one person oversee everything. So the petty cash, so if someone, so we have one person who oversees the petty cash to make sure it balances, and others who actually distribute the money. So in this case, you have the deputy treasurer and the deputy clerk that oversee the administration of petty cash.
So do we have to vote on that, or should we discuss the workshop idea?
I think you should, at this point, you can have the motion for the data practice and petty cash, and then talk about your workshops or vice versa.
Okay. Would somebody make a motion then, please, for the last three items? The data practices and the petty cash custodian.
Someone move to approve?
Second.
Call for a vote.
Aye.
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 And aye.
And Mr. Mayor, when you're taking those motions, you should also ask if there's any discussion on those motions before you vote on them.
Okay. We'll have discussion on this one, the city council workshop meeting. So what this would be, the first Wednesday is a planning commission night, correct?
It is.
From six until eight or nine, whenever they get done. So the object of this would be to, for us to be able to meet for two hours from four until six, and just discuss things that are upcoming, things that are new, things that may happen in Columbus or may not. For example, this JAMP discussion could have come at a workshop, so it's a little bit less formal, and like Elizabeth said, there are no minutes taken. It's just discussion on whatever topics are chosen. And we chose that time of day because it's right before a planning commission meeting, so whoever's going to stay and listen to that would already be here. You can go through your whole day and do it. It's not mandatory you be there, but anybody who shows up and listens to it would have a much better understanding of what's possibly going on or coming up to discuss or something like that. Anybody have any discussion on that? Any reason not to give it a try?
Who's all required or who's asking to come to that? I mean, we got the city engineers going to be coming, or?
No, it would be just the city council.
City council.
Yep, unless there would be something.
That would be needed.
Yeah, it's a major.
You know, I think it would be topic dependent. If you wanted an overview of the water system or the sewer system or something that really doesn't, you know what I mean, the engineer is the only one that's going to be an authority on that, then we would invite him to that meeting. Or if there's something that you don't want, you want our attorney to talk about, then he would be invited to the meeting on that workshop. So I think it's dependent on what the topic is going to be and who would take it.
Is this going to be every month we're going to have this? You think that's needed, or?
Yes, I think it's needed, and I think it would be the first Wednesday of each month. But you wouldn't expect the attorney to show up, or the planner, or anybody. I mean, this is for the council to discuss more items more deeply and more thoroughly, and a little bit more leisure of a setting. And again, if you can't make it, if you're working, if you're busy, that's fine. I just think it would be a good, a good chance to be a little bit more thorough.
Would we vote on anything or just discuss?
Just discuss.
Discuss.
Yep.
Okay.
If we were to, part of the reason why you would do a workshop and why many cities do a workshop, you're required, if you make motions, that's considered a meeting, and then you would have to take minutes. So it's a different format. It's more of a discussion than taking any action items. So that's why city councils do it. It gives them an opportunity to talk about one topic. An example would be, say, this past year, for, we wanted to talk about TIF again. Well, the night we had the special meeting, that was a two-hour discussion on that, and it was a special meeting, and we didn't really take action. It was all about really discussion. That could have been a workshop where we would have had two hours, and Tammy would have come in and said, okay, here's what we would do, and then we, and so you have someone coming in who specialized something, but you go into great detail to talk about a topic.
I think it's a great idea.
Would you set it from, you said four to six?
From four o'clock in the afternoon until six o'clock.
Run that long until it was less time needed? Would you leave earlier?
Yep.
You ain't going to tie people down until six o'clock. That's what I'm trying to.
It'll be so fun that you won't want to leave early.
Yeah, right.
And I think we can fill, we filled an hour tonight and just barely touched on anything. And look what, and we have a list of assignments to do. We could spend these two hours talking about our taglines, talking about our, who we're trying to talk to, what do we want to say, and come back a little bit better prepared, instead of having six months go by or two months go by and just spinning our wheels. So I'd like to give it a try. If anybody, if no one has a big objection to it, I'd say let's do it. So do we need to vote on this?
Yes, you should. That's a change in your meeting schedule, so you should establish what that meeting cycle would be. It sounds like it'll be the first Wednesday of the month from four to six, so that would be your motion.
Who wants to make the motion?
I move to include a city council workshop meeting on the first Wednesday of the month from four to six.
Do we have a second?
I second it.
And any discussion on it? Give it a try, Denny? I said, will you give it a try?
It's not mandatory to show up, though, is it?
No.
We'll give it a try.
You do get extra stars, though.
I'll be out of town the first, in February, the first.
I will, too. I'll miss the first one.
But do we keep any, we do not keep minutes, do we, or we do? So if he's out of town?
It's not required to do minutes. We can certainly keep notes, you know what I mean, for the meeting, and we can do that, but it wouldn't be, they wouldn't be official minutes.
Right. So if you had to be out of town, or you chose to be, then you could still catch up or talk to somebody. All right?
Mr. Mayor, if I could clarify, it is, it will become a regular meeting of the council. So the expectation would be that all council members would be there as scheduled permits. So I want to be clear that it's not a voluntary meeting, and when you, once you establish it as a regular council meeting, the expectation would be that you'd all show up.
The same as any of these meetings here?
Exactly.
All right. Let's call for a vote.
Aye.
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 And aye. All right. Thank you, Jim. All right. Elizabeth, let's continue.
The next part of the organizational meeting will address planning commission and all of the different boards and committees that we have. On the first page, you have planning commission, park advisory board, the public works advisory board, and the Forest Lake Cable Commission. The planning commission has terms, and you have two members, that their terms ended on December 31st, and that would be the 2019. In your packet, you do have letters that they have indicated that they would like to be reappointed to the planning commission. The park advisory board, you also have terms, and you have two members, or one member that was up, and you have a vacancy. We did receive today an email from Andrea Messina indicating that she would like to be reappointed to the park board. She was out of town, and that's why she didn't respond. We also have an application for the vacancy, and that was submitted by Mark Daly for the park advisory board. The public works advisory board, this is a committee that, I don't, I'm not even sure when it was established, but it was established during the township days, and so there isn't any terms that I'm aware of, and there isn't any bylaws that I'm aware of. There's just a resolution establishing a park, a public works advisory board. The Forest Lake Cable Commission is a commission, and it is a body that makes decisions, has its own budget, and in the bylaws and in the cable franchise agreement, it does indicate that we would have two members, appointed members, one would be from the council, and one could be at large. Doug Wood has been the person that's been at large on that Forest Lake Cable Commission, and to my understanding, he would continue, he would like to continue to serve on that board. And my understanding is Jeff is the other person today that is on that commission. So we can take those in any order you would like, or how you want to look at those appointments.
Well, don't we want to next choose our committee assignments?
We can certainly, we can certainly move on if you want to take it all together at one at a time after we go through the second page. So the second page is actually city council assignments and/or liaisons to certain other boards and committees that we have and watershed districts. So the first portion of the city council committee assignments is the building inspector liaison. We've had this, as long as I've been here, we've had a liaison to the, for the building inspector, and it gives him an opportunity to talk to a person from the council when he has issues, or there's conflicts, or we have something that needs to be resolved. And Denny has been, as long as I've been here, it's been Denny that has done that, and I'm trying to think, I think it was Mel before Denny who did that. The office liaison, historically, has been the mayor, and if we have any issues with the office, and that's more, that's not really personnel related, it's more about the office, where we have an issue with the office. We need to close, we, you know, something's not working, something's wrong at the office. The second portion of the committee assignments is, we have a joint fire board, and that takes two members. We have a joint powers agreement with Forest Lake, and there are two members from Forest Lake, two members from council who serve on that board. That board does have, it's advisory power, but they make decisions. So it's, they do have some policymaking decision power, but we jointly do the budget, so both councils have to approve the budget for the fire board. The fire chief is the staff liaison for that. Personnel committee, we also take two members from the council and myself to make up the personnel committee for interviewing purposes or any personnel issues that we have. The park board meetings, there has been a liaison for that, and also for the public works advisory board, and that would be only one person, and then there's an alternate if that person couldn't attend.
Elizabeth, can we stop there?
Sure.
In our discussion on the park board, since there are only four meetings a year, we had talked about having them come forward, instead of having a liaison, have them come forward and just make a presentation.
So there's two, there's two ways that we have done liaison and communications between committees. The planning commission, we changed the format many years ago where they rotate, so the planning commission member actually comes before the council and makes a report. And in that vein, the park board could do the same. There's only four meetings, and the chair already comes to the budget meeting, so she already does a report for at least one meeting, and then they could just rotate. There's five of them, so it would be one meeting a year where they would come before the council and actually do the report. So all of you would be able to hear what the park board is doing and give feedback to them. They would take it back to their committee. And if that format is what you think we can do at the park board also, then we would, you know, let them know that that's the direction we want to take for communications back and forth.
Anybody have any discussion on that? Before we go any further?
We've got a good park board right now, and I think they can handle the, without a liaison.
Just having them come in?
Have them come forward, yeah. I think it's a big, good idea.
Well, that's what we had discussed, and I think, I think that's true also.
I like the direct communication.
Well, then we can just cross, anybody, no one has to take that committee then. What was that?
That's park board and?
Just the park board will be no, no liaison.
The next section that you have is met council as needed, and for many years, we've not needed a liaison, but I think if we did need one, we would come back to the, I would come back to the council and indicate that we have a particular issue and that we need a person to assist with whatever issue there is at that time. The Forest Lake Cable Commission, do they meet semi-monthly, Jeff? I know the schedule changed, and I, this is the one thing I did, I know it was monthly, but then someone told me it changed.
Just changed this month, I believe, I mean, March is our next meeting.
So it's every other month?
Every other month.
Okay. So that has changed. It used to meet monthly, and now it's, now it's semi-monthly, so every other month. And the third one on the list here is the transportation sponsors. So this is new, this would be something new. This is something that, that's why it's highlighted in yellow. So two years ago, or I want to say three years ago now, one of our goals was we wanted to get funding for the bridge. We knew we wanted a new interchange, but we didn't have a mechanism. We had Anoka County indicating they would take the lead, but then we didn't have people who could go down to the legislature and lobby for it and meet with the senators. And so when we were having meetings in the city, because we had the senate transportation committee running ACES, and we were hosting them, and Congresswoman Emmer came to town, we hosted him for that project. So at that time, our current mayor was one of the liaisons, and Bill Krebs was the other one, and so whoever could meet, you know what I mean, or go with me, then they were the council members that did that. So my question to the council now is, do you still want to move in that vein? Because the other issue that, for transportation, now that we did get the bridge money, we were successful, but now the latest thing that has come up, and we had one joint meeting with Forest Lake talking about it, was the interchange between Trunk Highway 97 and County Road 14, and whether or not we still want to move forward, looking at whether we could get, there's already a bridge there at 80th Street and Fourth, whether we want to focus on making that a half interchange or not, or whether we want to continue with any work on 180th, or the alignment with 180th, and whether or not we're going to move forward with that, and if we were, we would work with the four communities, meaning Lionel Lakes, Hugo, Forest Lake, and Columbus, and you would need people, or representatives from the council to be on those, on that committee, or meet with them. Historically, the four communities have met, the name of that community was the I-35WE Coalition. They have met on certain topics, and this would probably be one of those topics where that would come together once again to have a common goal. When you have a common goal amongst four communities, it's a much stronger message to the legislature, and if we approached them and said we were looking for seed money for planning purposes, because there isn't a feasibility study, there's just, in everybody's comprehensive plan, it says we would like an interchange there, but there's been no planning, nothing, you know, with dollars or anything like that. So usually, your first goal, if you can have one of the counties as your lead people, meaning that they were going to lead the project, then you would have the cities come together and say, yes, it's a common goal, yes, we want to do this, and then you start lobbying for dollars. Again, that's a suggestion, it's some momentum that started last year with comprehensive plans, whether you want to continue that or not, that's kind of being thrown out there. And the last one is Fall Fest. We've had council representation on that steering committee. Denny was on it for 10 years. Mark did it for two years, I think. It does help when we have representation on that committee from the council. Generally, it's been six to eight meetings a year, and it's not, it's not, it's not consistent. So you might meet in January, but then you might meet in March, and then you might meet in April. They kind of self-elect when they're going to meet. So I can't really give you a schedule, except it's on a Wednesday and it's at five o'clock, and I want to say, historically, it's been on the fourth Wednesday of the month when they've met. Then the last part is watershed districts, and the watershed districts, Sunrise is, the water maintenance organization requires that we have two members on that board. Currently, Denny Peterson is on our, one of our representatives, and the at-large member has been vacant, and it's been vacant for some time. It's just because I can't, I can't recruit someone in order to be on that board. But that board, there's two members from East Bethel, two members from Ham Lake, two members from Linwood, and two members from Columbus. It's truly a board of elected officials and at-large members, and they oversee water quality, water issues within Sunrise. They don't have permitting authority, they don't have any, any staff other than, they have someone who does take minutes, and they have someone from Anoka Conservation District that they hire to lead them. So they, they don't have any internal staff. And I think, Denny, do they meet in East Bethel?
You meet East Bethel City Hall, and you got it down, monthly meetings. It's supposed to be five times a year.
Oh, is it down, is it down to five times?
We got five more, they got five more meetings left this year.
So then they meet, they meet six times a year, because didn't you just have a meeting?
We had two of them in the first of the year, budget and organization meeting, at seven, but usually, it's supposed to be five, five meetings. And you don't have to be living in Sunrise to be a member on it.
Elizabeth, what happens when you don't have your second?
We lose, we lose a vote.
Yeah, we lose a vote, and sometimes they don't always have a quorum. So that's the problem when you, because you need four to have a quorum.
The last time we had an at-large, it was two years ago, wasn't it, three years?
Yeah, I think that was the last time I actually was able to recruit someone.
Yeah. But it doesn't have to be somebody that lives in that district, correct?
My understanding is it does not.
As long as they're in the city.
As long as they live in the city.
Your discussion of budget at first part of the year, and basically anything else, but yeah, you don't have to be a member of the community, member of Columbus, that's all qualifications.
So now should we go back to the top and start? Do we nominate, or we just choose, or talk amongst yourselves? What's the best?
So you can certainly talk about the committee assignments, and then go back to the, to the planning commission park board and those committees, and talk about how you're going to address the planning commission vacancies and the park advisory board vacancies.
And Mr. Mayor and council, past councils have been fairly informal. They've just kind of raised their hands and talks amongst themselves. If you want to be more formal, you could take nominations and vote as we have on the statutory positions, but that's not required here. So you can be a little less formal if you like.
Then let's be less formal. From the building inspector liaison, Denny, you had done that?
I've done it before. Leon stops up once in a while and tells me if he has a problem, I'll take care of it. I'm easy to get, I'm usually around, they can find me. So it's easy for them, for him to, and I'd love to have it again.
Okay. So then. So then, page before. We have to go back to page. So anyway, then we just write them in?
Yes. So, right. Under Denny, in the past, we've put an M, meaning main, and then A is for alternate.
And then I would like that position as the alternate, unless someone else would like it. And then I was just pointing out, flip back one page to the Forest Lake Cable Commission. Anybody interested in that one? How about you?
Nobody wants it?
Don't look at me, Jeff. I've had it for eight, nine years.
I think I've had it longer than that.
No, you only had it for three.
Oh.
I'd like to nominate Jeff.
Yeah. All right, I'll take it.
And how often do they meet again? Every two months, right?
Yeah.
Next page again. Office liaison.
So can we go just go back? I put main under, Jeff, so who is the alternate for the Forest Lake Cable Commission?
Danny always said he'd be alternate.
I'll be alternate, yeah.
Okay.
But actually, that's on the second page, isn't it?
It is. It's in the middle, it's in the middle of the second page.
Okay.
Now Doug Wood, the reason why he's on the previous page is because Doug Wood is the, is the at-large representative.
Okay. I'll pencil him on the second page.
So as long as we're there, are you going to, you're going to, you're going to keep Doug as the liaison?
Sure.
Okay.
That's fine.
He really likes it. He's into photography, and he's, he's got a little input, doesn't he, Jeff?
Yeah. Yeah, he goes down, he visits people and stuff too, when they're filming and stuff.
And he likes to talk to people, so.
He's involved.
It's pretty good.
Okay, so now we're on back on page two, correct?
Yes.
And we're down to the Joint Fire Board or Office Liaison?
The Office Liaison, yeah.
And I was going to take that as mayor, however. Denny, you said you come up and, and you're in the office three or four times?
I'm in the office, I come here at least three to four times a week, so.
And if I'm here on the days that you're not here, that's fine. So let's put Denny as the main, and I will be the alternative. And the Joint Fire Board meeting, meetings as needed. And Jeff, you?
It's been four meetings, historically, it's been four meetings.
Four for the whole year.
Somebody else want it?
We need two, we need two members.
Yeah, I know.
This one? These girls want it.
They meet on a Thursday.
Want to take it?
Yeah. She said she'd take it if she can ring the bell.
Knows everything about it. I'd do it all, but I mean, whoever wants to do all, but. Aren't you the most knowledgeable about it?
Probably am. Assuming I am.
Do you want to take, there has to be two of us, right? So two mains. I can take that.
No, there's two people, two people.
Right.
Okay.
So Jeff?
All right.
And who is your second?
I'll take that.
Okay.
Okay, we're down to Personnel Committee meetings, or Personnel Committee meetings as needed. I would like to be on that as the mayor.
I've never been on it, and I've been bumped off a few times, but I'd like, if nobody else wants it, I'd like to be on it. I don't want to take it all, let somebody else have some of it.
I'm happy to do it.
Yeah. Do you want to be the main, or is that a main and alternative, or just two?
Two mains and one alternate.
Yeah. We're down to...
So who are the mains and who's the alternate?
Shelley and I.
Oh, Janet.
Or Janet, I'm sorry.
And Denny's the alternate?
Sure.
Yes.
Park Board.
You just decided?
They're going to report to us.
Okay, so we don't have to worry about that. Public Works Advisory Board. Denny, you've done that in the past. Would you like to do it again?
It's easy for J.W. or Jim to come up and see me in those projects, so I'd love to have it again.
Yeah. And who would like to be the alternate?
I can be.
You can be?
Yeah. Danny makes most all the meetings, I guess, so it wouldn't, the name, I guess.
And the Met Council as needed. We don't, do we want names in there or not, Elizabeth?
You don't need to.
Just tap.
You can bring that back to the council.
So then the next one is the Cable TV Commission. We already settled that. And then the highlighted transportation sponsors. I kind of think that's an important thing, because we've gotten the ball kind of rolling and...
I think the fearless leadership, the mayor should step in for that.
And why not? Continue. Yeah. I can take that. Who would like to be the alternate?
I'd do the alternate.
And now we're to the Fall Fest City Council Representative. Who wants to do that and who would like to be the alternative?
I'm the party girl.
Shelley is the number one. Janet?
I can do the alternate, yep.
And we're down to the watersheds. Who would like to be the Rice Creek Watershed Liaison, main and alternate? Yeah? As the main, alternate, main? Anyone want to be the alternate? Anybody? I'll take the alternate.
What meetings are, is that just as needed in the Rice and the Coon Creek? I understood that the only one that had meetings was the Sunrise.
So Rice Creek would only be if there's an issue. There's a resident issue, you know, you're trying to resolve an issue where you have to go to a couple of meetings. Last time it was a person on Pine Street for, had an issue with drainage, and we brought Rice Creek in. And so it's really as needed, and it's for specific issues. I would say Coon Creek does not need, I generally go, if there's, if there's an issue, then I go to the meetings. The meetings are in Blaine. It's only a very small portion of Columbus that are in Coon Creek.
So we don't need anyone for that position?
Not for, not for Coon Creek.
Okay. And then Sunrise. Shelley, you'd talked about, you'd be willing to?
I'm the sacrificial lamb.
All right, we could take two members.
Who wants?
Is the second one the at-large member?
It could be either. It could be a council member or an at-large. They give, they give you a choice.
We've been having trouble finding an at-large member. At one time, there was two council members, me and Mark used to, so it can be two council members. And we have two votes.
Do they meet? When do they meet?
6:30, the first Tuesday of the month. No.
It's a Thursday.
Thursday of the month, first Thursday of the month.
Thursday, yeah.
They said, they told me last minute, they got five meetings left.
When you, when you tried to get somebody for that at-large position, did you just put it like on the internet, the site?
We put it on the internet, but I will tell you that I recruited, you know what I mean, I recruited the last member only because I knew she had a biology degree and she was interested in, in water and, due to health reasons, you know, she had to resign. But, so I try to, I try to match up people that I know that would have like an interest in it, but I have yet to find someone who, you know what I mean, wants to, you know, wants to do that and commit to the meetings. But if you know of someone who has, I mean, generally, you have to talk to people and say, this is what we have opening before you recruit. I think we've had that opening on the website for forever, and nobody has ever even called us about it.
It's only a third of Columbus, so I mean, it seems to me that it would be in the best interest of the people to have somebody from that area, you know? We don't know anybody that...
Well, it's kind of, the area is kind of north of Broadway, but a lot of Carlos Avery is in it, so it's really like the Coon Lake area, and then a small area around Kettle River, 189th, and in that area. So there's, there's not a whole lot of applications and issues in that area, because I end up processing all the applications that come in for the Wetland Conservation Act and any other things that they want to do on the property to process. But the meetings that they have are more on policy. You create, I think now they're doing a surface water management plan, or maybe that's what we call it, I'm not sure what the watershed calls it, but they're working on different plans. But it's overall policymaking, you know, and then the different communities have to implement it.
See, the Sunrise, the wrong Sunrise, they don't have any power to clean in their ditches or anything like that. All the ditches that they have in Sunrise, Anoka County is in charge of. So it's Advisory Board that's, it's, they got a little power, but they don't have power like the Rice Creek does. They can't tax and do stuff. They don't have the money to do that.
So do alternate?
So how about this?
Yeah?
I have somebody who might be interested in this, that could be at-large, and if they say no, then I'll be the alternate.
Okay. Cool.
The alternate or the second?
Shelley will be the main.
I'll be the second, sorry.
I'm going to need your girl's email address so I can forward it on to the secretary so she can contact you before we close, then. Thank you.
So that takes care of that page. So then we have to go back, I guess, Elizabeth, right, to the bottom of the first page? With the Planning Commission, the park, and the Public Works Advisory? Or is that just informational?
The Public Works Advisory Board, there isn't, there are not terms. The way that I understand this advisory board working is they're on, they're on the Public Works Advisory Board until they resign.
Yeah.
And it's really as needed. They, I want, did you have three or four meetings last year? Yeah. The Park Advisory Board has a vacancy, and then you have one person, which is Andrea Messina, that's looking for reappointment. The Park Advisory Board, the unique part of that is the mayor appoints, and the mayor makes the appointment to that committee, and the council ratifies it. The Planning Commission, you have two, two current members that are looking for reappointment, but you also have a vacancy. So there's a couple of different things you can do there. There you can interview all of them, because you technically have three vacancies. And if you wanted to do that, we can set up, we do have a pool of applications, and we can set up interviews next week or time that you want to determine. We would call them for interviews, and the Personnel Committee can do that. That's outlined in the bylaws, that that's the process that we would take. And then at the next meeting that you have, you can make appointments to the Planning Commission based on the recommendations from the Personnel Committee.
And when would we do the interviews from the Personnel Committee?
We can do them as soon as next week. We can do it on, we can do it on Wednesday, you know, being that there wouldn't be a Planning Commission meeting on Wednesday. Not knowing the schedules of the people that applied, if you want to do it between 4:00 and 8:00, or you want to do it, you do 7:00 and 9:00, when the Planning Commission would have met, it's kind of up to you. Whatever you would like to do there, I would just post the meeting saying the Personnel Committee is going to do interviews with Planning Commission members.
So it's just a matter of what time would be the easiest for most applicants to come in?
How many people do we want, do we have that want to be Planning Commission members?
Right now, there's, technically, there's three vacancies. You know what I mean, because two of them, two of the terms have ended, but you have two that have requested to be reappointed. And our mayor was a Planning Commission member, so his, his seat creates a vacancy. So you have two three-year terms. 19, 20, 20, 22, three-year, let's see, 19, 20, 21.
How many applicants do we have?
Either four or five. They keep putting them in the folder, so I know last I counted, there was approximately that many. I'm trying to think of the terms. I want to say they're three-year terms, but one would be taking Jesse's term, so that would be like a two-year, you know what I mean, a one or two-year term.
So let's pick a time for next Wednesday. What do you think, Elizabeth?
You know, I asked Rochelle, I asked Rochelle whether she, because she would be normally taking the minutes, you know what I mean, at that time. So I asked her, you know, she said any time would work, because then she would coordinate the minute out, you know what I mean, of the interviews.
I can do the, I'm...
Well, let's say anything from 4:00 till 8:00.
Okay.
And if we have some gaps in between when no one is available, we'll just wait for So the next thing on that page would be the Park Advisory Board.
Jesse, are we going to keep the members on there, or eliminate everybody and start over again? What you doing here?
On the...
You can only deal with the open, those that are on, that are, terms aren't up, they stay on.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're just going to the applicants.
Two applicants, you want to interview them again, or you want to?
Yes, we'll interview everybody.
Okay. Just the two applicants and a new person to take your place?
Correct.
Okay. But the two, two on that, oh, Jody and Garth is there yet? You're not going to interview them?
Nope, they, no, Jody's not up, right?
No, Jody's not up, and neither is Garth.
Correct. So it would be just be Jim and Pam, and then whoever else she has.
Okay, fine. I just want, I want to clarify it.
Who the new people are. Okay, then we're on, you all right with that?
Good.
Onto the Park Advisory Board. And I have to appoint.
For Andrea Messina, you can accept her letter of reappointment if you choose to do that. And then you had one application in your packet from Mark Daly, and you can make the recommendation, or is it a recommendation?
So it's an appointment, and then the council would...
Ratifies it.
The mayor would make the appointments, and the council would ratify.
On both of them or just on Mark?
On each.
On separate?
On separate, separate actions, correct.
So then I would like to make the appointment for Andrea Messina to the Park Advisory Board. And now ask for a vote.
Correct. Ask for ratification.
And may we have a second?
Yep, fine, second.
You're not the, you're not the maker of the motion, so you'll need both a motion and a second. So you're making the appointment, and then they're ratified.
So would somebody want to make?
Make a motion, make a motion to accept Andrea Messina.
Yep, and a second. And a vote. Denny?
What?
Aye.
A vote on it.
Oh, aye.
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 And aye. Okay, so the next one is for Mark Daly. I would like to appoint him to the Park Advisory Board, but we need a motion?
Is this, I'm just looking at his, he says park advisor here, but his, looks like he wants to, he's running for something else.
It was confusing to me, too, that...
There's another leg in there.
Economic Development Authority.
These are two different applications?
Exclamation, or, maybe it's the second page or something else. It sounds like he must be on EDA when you look at his...
Yeah, it does.
Volunteering. It is confusing.
You go to this page here, it's...
I know, I've seen that. Did you read the?
Look at the second page.
No, you read that, it's EDA.
Well, he's already on the EDA, was appointed last month.
Right, right.
That's a strange application, then.
I don't know, he might have mixed it up, but I do know that, I do know that he wanted to be on the park board, so he might have mixed up the pages. You know what I mean, but I do know that...
Okay. That's he wants to be on. So I will appoint him. Does somebody want to make a motion?
Make a motion, pork mark.
And a second?
Second.
And a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Let's take care of that. Now we're on to page three, which is just a letter from the Forsyth Times. Actually, we're through with this. We can go back to the agenda, right?
Correct, you're, you're completed now.
Okay, number nine.
I'm sorry, there's two, two things that you need to do. You make, um, there's two motions that I need. One is, yes, you made the appointments, but now I need motions for the two contracts.
Which are listed on number nine, one of the Rebecca Peterson and the Dover Kennel.
And I'm going to stop you before that, because you did this informally.
Correct.
Fill it all out, so you can just make a motion for the record, that those, all those informal discussions are now accepted by motion, so it's an action of the council.
So moved.
Second.
Vote?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. And now we're on to the motion for Rebecca Peterson and the Dover Kennel. Separate motions, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
And does anyone have any questions on Rebecca Peterson? O'Callaghan contract. So she's the account, she's the
So we, we have cer, we have certain needs for high-level accounting, and Rebecca comes in on an hourly basis when we need to get reporting done or auditing. There are certain reports that she's able to put together, so that's what the, the service contract's for.
And how often does she come in?
It's as needed, it's as needed, and, and I would say for, right before audit would be, there would be more hours versus between June and September, and then once we go into budgeting, then she'll help out again. So it's more for reporting, it's a higher level accounting ability that she has in order to get reports done.
So does somebody want to make the motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Call for a vote?
Aye.
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 Aye. All right, and the next one is to approve the Dover Kennel animal 2019 contract in the enclosure.
So moved.
Second. Call for a vote?
Okay, did he ever come out with a report, how many dogs he's handling or anything, last year, or this, 18, do we got any kind of records on what he does?
He, he has not given us an overall report. I can certainly ask him to do that. Looking at the contract, he's actually lowered his prices from last year to this year.
I tried to get the guy that we had a few years ago to give us something, he never gave us anything good. He's finding out how many dogs he's, just sort of sick.
Is this a position that's required for the city?
Animal control contract, I wouldn't say is required, however, when people call for stray dogs or certain services, we, we would have to tell them they were basically on their own in order to pick up dogs or to, and these are the dogs that are stray dogs, or, you know, and I can't think of another circumstance, but in this particular case, I don't know that we have a, a big problem, but most communities have an animal control officer.
Or the police department will do the work, but in this case, the sheriff's office does not do this work.
The sheriff's office will only do the work is if, if you already have a place to bring them. So in the past, we've had a contract with Hillcrest Animal Hospital, but they discontinued the contract last year. So only if you have a contract with a, an entity, will you be able to bring the animals to them, will they pick them up. Otherwise, they will not pick them up.
So there's been discussion in the past about going without this contract, and usually the council has resolved that, that it's needed, but you could certainly not approve it, and then you'd be without this service.
If I remember correctly, their fees are passed on to whoever owns the dog that they picked up, right? So it's fairly low cost to the city to have this.
I would say generally, yes. If it's unclaimed, that's when we pick up the cost, but it's, it's very, it's under $500 that we have ever spent any particular year.
So we made a motion, seconded, and we're going to get some information. My dogs, he's
Yeah, ask him, please.
Just see what's going on with that.
And a vote?
Aye.
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 Aye. Number 10 is the recycling program.
At our last meeting, we approved the contract that Anoka County prepared for us. This is a program that, I won't say is mandated, but it's a program that every city has. The dollars come, are collected through your garbage haulers, and then they're passed on to Anoka County, and Anoka County then redistributes them for a residential recycling program. And in this case, Lori is our recycling coordinator, and she's put together for you a brochure for the next year as to what activities she'd like to have in order to meet the goals for recycling for our community. She's looking for suggestions, and in this case, she's proposing three dates. All three dates are for recycling here at the city. But certainly, like last year, we had two curbside events and one event here. It could be any combination. The dates are pretty specific, because you have to hire people to do it, and they only have certain dates that are open. So she knows the dates that are on there, that the services are available in order to do the program. But again, looking for suggestions on maybe how to communicate to others that we have this program, whether you think they're one curbside, two events here, however, whatever com, or combination you think is appropriate for the community. And then also, if you have other suggestions that could happen on that day.
So are you looking for us to, to just volunteer to work with Lori with her suggestions, or are you looking for a motion to approve, that she has?
So what the motion would be is that you're, you're approving, because that brochure would be sent out and circulated. So what you would be approving is that these activity, the activity happening in the city on those dates, and to also send out the flyer. If you have suggestions on the flyer, or if you have suggestions on the, um, what type of events should be included in it, then I would say directly correspond with Lori and chill. If we have the money and the budget for it, she'll certainly be able to do that.
But the flyer doesn't include right now the curbside pickup, so I'd like to see that added before we approve this flyer.
Okay.
And are you thinking of just one, curbside pickup?
Well, at least one. I don't know what we can afford or what the budget is, but I know that, I mean, I've taken advantage of it. That's really nice to be able to move into the end of the driveway, then try to find somewhere with a truck to haul it over here.
With the curbside pickup, there is a charge for that, isn't there?
Yeah.
No, we, there is a, I mean, there isn't, like, we have to get this out tomorrow, but we can, I can say, you know what, they'd like to have one curbside, you know what I mean, pickup and, and then bring the brochure back. But if you have suggestions in between the next two weeks, then she can incorporate it in the mailer.
I can, I mean, I'm happy to talk to her, work with her, too, to talk about how to communicate this more broadly, because I think, like everything, it's hard to get the word out there, so
Okay.
So we don't need a motion on that, then?
We'll, we'll bring it back to the next meeting, for, to the next meeting.
Number 11, direction discussion, discussion on the 2019 Fall Festival event, page five.
So looking at the calendar events, um, there's a couple of meetings coming up. So we, when you look at the calendar, which is on the last page of your agenda, on the 17th is a, there's a park board meeting at 6:30 for a park board meeting, but the Fall Fest meeting has been scheduled for 5 o'clock on the 23rd. Lori is the staff member that coordinates the activities for, for Fall Fest and that meeting. And she was looking for some suggestions, perhaps on event activities that you might have. And this would be city-sponsored, city-sponsored events, not necessarily input on, um, you know what I mean, how we're going to set up Fall Fest. This is really more about events, because each of the four entities, whether it's the Senior Center, the Lions, the Columbus PTO, yeah, the Columbus PTO, or, or the city, they all have their separate boards, and the boards then determine what activities they're going to have. So last year, the Lions said they were going to have the Beer Garden, and the Senior Center said that they were going to have the Silent Auction. And so their committee then sponsors it, but then they send one representative to the meeting saying, okay, overall, this is what we're going to do, and then they have a common mailer, they have a common brochure. And that's really what the committee does. The committee puts all those things together, along with a, a, um, video, L A TV puts a video together, advertising it all. So really, it's giving feedback to her to bring back to the committee to say, this is what the city's going to sponsor for this event, and this is what we would like to do. And then, and putting the, the brochure together. And I don't, I don't know, Denny, have you and Mark even talked about whether there's a car show, or?
I don't know if Mark's going to do it, or if he doesn't, I will this year again. He hasn't decided. Last I talked to him, and he left already, I think so.
And so this is the Fall Fest city council representatives? Go to this, or?
So right now, I forget who you appointed to the
Me.
Shelley.
Shelley, okay. Um, so yeah, you're, you're, um, at this point, you would sell, Shelley, oh, I think, I think the city will have a, you know, like you said, okay, car show is good, so, you know what I mean? And, and I don't know what other events, you know, we had pie and ice cream for, gosh, I think since that started, we've sponsored the, the pie and ice cream. But I think the cost has been covered by others for that. But it's what activities you, you would like to see sponsored by the city? So we've, we've had the welcome wagon, if there's other things you'd like to see?
This is a very low income, low, um, expenditure for the city. Well, how much is usually the Fall Fest cost us?
Well, the budget is $1,000, but in the budget, there's $1,000.
Yeah, it's, I don't think it ever reached, reached that high, has it? Not that high?
As far as expenses go?
Yeah.
I don't, no, I, I think we're, I think we've been well under it. Plus, we've gotten some donations. This past year, um, we had a donation of $500 towards the 2019.
Yeah.
So yeah, actually, we have now $1,500 that you're able to use.
So, so the ladies just have to get together and come up with ideas? Or are we supposed to?
If that's the direction, if the, if the direction is to delegate the ideas that the city sponsored events, then that's what you, that's what you do. If there's some compelling thing that you want the city to sponsor or look into. I know in the past, they've talked about, do we want to have a movie in the park the night before? Do we want, you know, do we want to do something basically sponsored by the city, um, an event, and I don't, I don't know what that could be, because over the years, we, we've tried to do different things, but
We did fireworks one year, but that didn't work out very good. We scared the guy's dog, and the guy ran over, so it wasn't nobody's fault, but he escaped out of the house, you know?
So maybe we just have to think of ideas and come back. There's not a big rush on this, is there?
The, the first meeting for the Fall Fest is, uh, I think it's right before the, right before the meeting. It's the 23rd. So whoever, okay, so someone's going to get really meetinged out here, because the Fall Fest meeting is at 5:00, our special meeting is at 6:00 for the EDA, and then we have the council meeting at 7:00 on that Wednesday. So, well, I don't think there's a rush, because you have so many months to, to settle it. I think maybe at the first meeting, you would say, we, you know, yes, we're going to have a car show, but we haven't really talked about other things yet.
But no?
Have we ever done anything with getting the businesses involved, the Columbus businesses?
The, um, there have been events where we've had businesses rent space, and so Running Aces and Holiday and a few other businesses have rented space, and that's how we raised some money to do it. And I think that Lori has a list of those people. I think, um, Waldocks and Coats RV brought over trailers and such. But I do think you'd have to come up with criteria, you know what I mean, for what businesses and, and what you would like. Because what it was turning into was, we have a Mary Kay booth and a this booth, but that really wasn't sponsoring business, it was just an opportunity to sell things. And that really wasn't the, the idea when we first started. When we first started, it was promoting the business, so they would give out cards, like, here's my business, this is what I do, use me, because I, you know, my business is here. And that really was what, what we were trying to do. It wasn't about selling Mary Kay or selling wares, it was more about promoting the businesses. But then they would say, well, that is my business, I'm a home, home business, and that's what I sell. So I think there should be maybe some criteria of, of what you would have there. Not that any of those businesses are bad, just criteria as to how much space and what you would charge.
Got all that, Julie?
Yep.
All right, so now let's move on to letter D, which will start with the engineer report.
Good evening. I had two items on to discuss. The first one is information and policy direction, and this was the last council meeting, maybe the council meeting before. There was a resident or two brought up a concern about the site distance on Hornsby Street, south, with the temporary barricades that are out there. So we've brought that up to MINDOT and the contractor, the design-build team, and they've, they went out and looked at it. And I apologize, I don't, apologize, I don't have a, a graphic. I just got an email recently. They felt that when you're at Hornsby, trying to get onto 97, you can see behind the barricades and up the hill, which I don't disagree with. I think as the cars get closer to the intersection, they, that's when they get behind those type-three barricades, the taller ones, and the concrete. But, so at this point, they're, they don't see an issue. They said they would put some more signage out, not to block the intersection, so that you stop where the stop sign is, and don't creep out farther into the, into the intersection. So their position is that, they've looked at it, their traffic people have looked at it, they don't see a significant issue, and are planning on leaving it that way with more monitoring. So that's information. If you want to, if you, if you don't disagree or want further action, we can take that back and, or with higher level, um, direction. Otherwise, you'll be living with it probably for three or four months until construction starts again. With the design-build project, things change a lot, so originally, that was designed for a right turn lane there to Hornsby in the barricades. But then, as the project progressed, um, they constructed half of Hornsby differently than what they originally thought. So then this configuration that's out there now is what they came up with based on how the north half was constructed, and the south half needs to be constructed next year yet. So I don't know if any of you have physically driven that, or seen that, or had an issue, but we had a few concerns brought up. Because at this point, they're going to leave it the way it is unless someone feels strongly differently.
And if we feel strongly, they will come and do it, or we could meet with them, or what happens?
We'd have to meet with them. They're not going to, that's their decision right now. So if we feel differently, we'd have to meet with them or escalate it to a higher level. I don't believe there's been any accidents that have been reported, so that's another thing they put that.
It's good to be proactive. Before the accidents happen. So anybody else have any, what do you think?
I was there the other day, and I didn't, it was a big problem. I had a higher vehicle. I mean, Dan Mike, he lives there.
Yeah, they have, pretty sure they have guidelines and regulations for those type of barricades, that they, they're not going to change the, the physical composition.
Anybody you have to say?
I've, we discussed as a council, I haven't been down there and looked at it, so I don't, I get no opinion. I really don't know.
Let's go take a look at it.
Let's do it, yeah.
And then, then we get back all of you, and you get all of them, and
Sure.
If you can come out and all look at it together.
That'll work.
Great. Next.
Okay, on the next item, I do have a, in your packet, a recommendation to reduce the letter of credit on the Thernbeck Preserve Development. the letter of credit on the Thernbeck Preserve Development, as requested by the developer. Looked at the, all the quantities that were constructed to date, so I would recommend reducing the letter of credit, yeah, I have by about $183,000, but retaining $150,000 to, they still need to come, put the final lift of bituminous on the roadway, and then there's some erosion and sediment issues we want to look at in the spring, and also for the development agreement, they're required to keep twenty percent of the original letter of credit for a year, to make sure there aren't any issues. So if, make a motion to that effect, to reduce the letter of credit by the amount indicated.
So moved.
Second. Aye, yeah.
Aye.
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 That's all I had.
Anything else? I have one thing for the engineer, before we move on. Would you please check with Anoka County, I had a few people ask me about the schedule of paving, and then send that back, or bring it to the next meeting?
For Kettle River Boulevard?
Yep, Kettle River, Arthur Broadway. What in the Broadway, any of that kind of stuff?
Yeah, we can check on their schedules, and not only that one, but I'll check with Broadway Shoulder Project, the Signal at Broadway in Lexington, and Cassell Fifty-Four, so they've got four projects going on next year.
Thank you. Attorney Report?
I don't have a formal report, Mr. Mayor, but I would say to the, particularly to the new council members, but all of the council members, as by way of reminder, part of our retainer is, so you can call us when you have questions, so I will leave business cards, and if, you know, council members don't call me every week, or even every month, but I just want you to know that that's part of the service we provide, so that if you have questions between meetings, we can answer those for you.
Thank you. City council members, Denny?
Hey, I just want to bring up the Anoka County, whiting, cleaning the shoulders down Kettle River, and, and, but, and the main, you know, Kettle River and Lake Street, Lake Drive, I don't know if anybody's been down by there and seen it, the, the sixty-foot easement, isn't it, on, Elizabeth, on the county road up there?
On either side of the center line, yes.
Yeah, and, and they took down a lot of trees, and it's, it's a lot, lot safer at the intersections and stuff, it's, I think it's a good improvement, all I have.
Nothing report? Nothing here. Public Works. Public Information Coordinator Report?
No report.
City Administrator?
No report.
All right, then we're down to Letter E, which is a planning commission meeting on two, six, and nineteen, and the calendar of meetings is on page twelve. Anything else? Anybody?
If not, we'll adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second it.
On the favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you?
Email that.
Yes.